Roll call meeting to order. Shelley, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Reyes.
Here.
District two, Councilman Pastor.
Present.
District three, Councilman Leatham.
Present.
Vice Mayor Stapleton.
District four.
Here.
District five, Councilman Giles.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley is excused. Mayor Mouse.
Here.
Thank you, Shelley. Please join me in prayer. Lord Jesus, we ask that you place your healing hand over our country and our community. Come to our aid now in the midst of this global spread of the coronavirus, that we may experience your healing love. Heal those who are sick now, and may they regain their strength and their health, and heal us from the fear of the uncertainty. Please watch over all our healthcare providers, firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, police officers, our doctors, our nurses, our respiratory techs, so that they may continue to take care of those suffering from this illness. And we ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Mike, can you listen to pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on our agenda is a call to the public, and we have a link that you can email your questions in. Are we going to address those now, or those as they come in?
I believe that they'll be related to one topic. Danny, how many do you have? Do you have any? No, so it is at council@globeaz.gov. And if you email those, I don't know that they're ready to go right now, but a lot of them are probably related to the topics that are on the table, that are on the agenda. So we can take those comments and deal with them as to the item.
Okay.
And so what the system is, that Daniel emailed, will send them to me, and then send them to the printer, and then Michelle's volunteered to help run those, and we'll get them to your mayor.
Okay. So we'll move on to the next topic. And we have summary of current in this event, limited to comments, information announcements regarding the city and community response to COVID-19. And I want to give opportunity to all our councilmen to be able to comment, if they have any comments, on the COVID-19 before we go on to any council reports. So we'll start with Freddie, if you have any comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not really prepared to make comments at this point. Looking at the agenda, I think there'll be opportunity for discussion. So, thank you, anyway.
Thank you, Freddie. Charlie, any comments?
The only thing I have is that we're all in this together, so let us all, please, be kind to one another.
Mike?
I don't have any comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse?
I don't have any comments as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Mike?
No comments from me, Mayor. Thank you.
And no comments from me either. I think our discussions will be taking place during the topics of the agenda. So I'll go to council members, any things you want to report, other than anything on COVID. Freddie?
No, sir, thank you.
Freddie?
Mike?
Jesse?
No, you're going to discuss about the chamber, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then nothing.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. I do have a few things. I just want to, if we can take just a moment of silence, we lost one of our past attorneys, county attorneys in our city today. Also, he was a 25-year glow fire department reserve volunteer for us, many years ago. A lot of, maybe the new guys don't remember him, but he did put 25 years in with the city as a volunteer, and that was Pete DiNino. So if we could have a moment of silence for Pete, please. Thank you. I just want to send some thank yous out. One, going to Vice Mayor Stapleton and opening up his doors in to help with the situation with our school kids being out of school and not having food to be able to have access to. Want to thank Mike for that. We want to thank our youth club, those members that are on there that opened their doors also, and are distributing food, but also taking care of the youth of our community. Our library is also distributing, and the school district stepped up, and they were able to get some funding to go ahead and continue delivering meals to different locations of our community. So I thank those organizations and individuals for that, for allowing that, or making that possible. We also worked today, was in contact with Melissa Buzan with the county and social services, also had a conversation with Tiana at the chamber, and what we have done, and what has been set up, and Jesse knows some of this also, so pipe in at any time. But what we're going to do, we have, we want to try and, Tiana is going to allow the conference room, Chamber of Commerce is closed down to the public, but allow the conference room to be, to be able to deliver supplies, like water, toilet paper, whatever. And this is going to be solely for the purpose of the elderly. And these are going to be the people that are homebound, that are the vulnerable, so we can deliver those. And all you got to do is get them there, you can contact the chamber, Tiana or Angel be answering the phones, and then we have volunteers that will go out and take this to these people throughout the community. In fact, we already have a few requests from some homebound people. So Jesse, any other thing? I think there was a timeframe when you could...
As soon as she starts getting more stock in, she did state that she plans to deliver, she has a phone number that she asked to give out to those that need it, it's 928-812-2157. That's her cellphone number. She'd be happy to go out and help those vulnerable adults and families go grocery shopping for them as well. She did say they're planning to offer from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. for those that can get there. They'll open that up for them, they'll put care packages together or whatnot and bring it out to them.
Great.
As well. So those are the times there. And like you said, Mayor, just call the chamber, the chamber, they've closed the doors from the public coming in, but they're still there working.
Yeah. And this is going to be a flow for the people that are able to get to the stores. These are going to be the people that we really, that need the help, especially the elderly. And that's all I have. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, we have, thank you all to council for getting together on short notice for a couple items we need to address. I just, before we get going, I wanted to address the one issue. The, there have been, we've seen a lot of cities that have looked at and have enacted the closure of bars and the inside restaurants, except for local delivery. All right? They have done that through their emergency powers as one feature. But enacting an emergency power, what we're doing here, the proclamation declaring an emergency, does not mean automatically that that happens. That is one of the options available, and cities have taken advantage of it. I think Mesa is doing declaration of emergency, and they're not doing that, they've stated that. I think on the phone call, the morning phone call, I heard, I think 14, 14 cities have done a, declared a state of emergency, including Miami, which did on Monday, but it doesn't necessarily, it's, they're not related, they're related, but they're not, one does not mean the other. I think if I'm saying that clearly, which sometimes I don't. But it's a, it's what we need for procurement, and just to ensure that any costs due to this emergency, we can get reimbursed through FEMA. And while the state has already declared that emergency, it would, it would help that way. I think it's just cleaner that we have our own declared state of emergency proclamation, so we can make sure that any costs due to this are reimbursed, and it gives the freedom to, to kind of, we won't let procurement get in the way of getting things done. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for you.
Thank you. So we'll go to new business. First on the agenda is update from staff regarding the city's response to the COVID-19
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, times have changed in a matter of weeks. So I'm going to take a second here to get out my Lysol wipe. Well, that's like about five of them. Make sure get that. Anyways, we have been, this has been ramping up and has become something that is moving very quickly. Your city staff has been observing and not taking the lead, but being proactive. I think we're watching and we're trying to be responsive. So this update, I mean, just simple things like we've spaced out council a little bit, we had a meeting today, we spaced people out. I mean, there are just some things that's going on as part of the culture right now. I wanted to go through a detailed, not a detailed, but a briefing on what we are doing and what we're looking at in the future. So the question has been, and I've been getting phone calls also, what is the city's response? Well, our framework, I believe we should be, the city should be proactive, but balanced. Okay? Better to, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to be reacting to things, we're trying to get ahead of, and figure out or predict what is going to happen, and be ready with some options. We want to be balanced, there's a lot to balance there. Better to be a little bit on the side of overreaction, underreaction, but we're going to try to nail it and get the appropriate reaction. Council must balance the concerns of the residents and the businesses while maintaining public safety. And there's a great balancing act there, and this is uncharted territory. When thinking about this, when we're planning, and we have meetings, and we have meetings pretty much every other day, just to make sure that we're on top of things, our response is going to be based on the level of activity of the virus in the area. Level one would be a positive case of coronavirus in the region. Right now, we do know that there's, there is a case in Safford and Graham County, and they're testing all over, they're increasing the testing, but right now, it's in the region. Level two, a positive case of coronavirus locally. Now, it depends how you decide what locally is. A general reading is Globe Miami area. But if you think about it, if people are coming from wheat fields and shopping in our stores and hang out in our community, or they're coming from the Copper Rim, or from the San Carlos, which we know they do, we're, you know, we're Globe Miami, San Carlos. I think, I think we look at that luckily, and thank gosh, we have not had that yet, but they're increasing testing, and with increasing testing, if it's out there and we haven't caught it, it may surface. So we're, we're looking at a step as to what happens when we hit that level. The third level that we're planning on, or planning in case of, is level three, a positive case of coronavirus within Globe City government. Okay? And then, as an organization, we have to keep our, and we're always thinking about keeping our people safe, our staff safe, and our residents, but we have to plan internally because we are the provider of city services. You give us a priority in the projects and the funding, and we need to deliver to the residents. So we're planning on that. Level one. That's probably not good, though. The, and sometimes we've got to break some bad habits, like licking my finger to turn the page. Our current state, city actions taken to this point, information, we're reviewing information, they have phone calls set up, multiple phone calls set up, reviewing information daily, posting relevant links on our website for the residents. We have the CDC, we have Arizona Department of Health, we have World Health Organization on our city website, we have a description of things that you should do, shouldn't do, stay home if you're sick, you know, don't shake hands, fist bump instead, those kind of things. We're trying to pass along the do's and don'ts to our residents. There are many sites and many locations that have that, but I think it's important that you see it as many times and see what we're seeing. Mainly, we're following CDC recommendations. Coordination, we're working with local county-state officials, local county-state officials following CDC, working with the county, definitely Tri-City, Fire District, talking to other cities, and the state also is getting involved in delivering supplies. You hear a lot more of that when the fire chief and police chief come up and talk. Internally, we have implemented additional HR protections and are practicing CDC guidelines. We want to make sure that we modified it, so if someone does come in sick, that we have the ability to say, you will go home, you need to go home, you know, take care of yourself. And we have the power to enforce that as a HR. If people need to go home and they don't have, they don't have enough sick time, they have to go through the vacation sick time, but we have newbies that have very little sick days. We have, we already have, we've established, when I first came in, a sick leave bank, and we will make sure that's stockpiled, and make sure, my goal through this event is to make sure that no one ends up not being able to come to work and not receiving a paycheck. Okay? Because this is, this is something that we need to make sure our people are financially stable for whatever happens here. And then we're working with other things, on making sure members of our staff that are at risk and have, are vulnerable, that we make sure we don't put them in additional risk. The, and so, yeah, we're providing for the, making sure identifying possible high-risk employees that just were nothing of their own, that they have a history, that we make sure we take care of them. So that's part of our current state. On the, on the more public side, we, the first thing we decided, even before the schools close, closed the active adult center. If you, if the virus was to get in there and move through that organization, they're all members of the vulnerable population with their age, it would be devastating. And when you have them congregating like that, it's a, it just, it was too dangerous. We closed that down last week, or let it know last week, Monday is for sale. Now, we're still serving Meals on Wheels, and we're allowing people to come by between 12:30 and 11:30 and 12 for seniors. I think we gave away 45, 50 lunches today, and also, I know there, there's a lot of food sources for the, for the young kids, but this is for the seniors. And so, on top of that, we went and the library, where you have a lot of different activities, a lot of different people there, a lot of different age groups, and with the closure of the school and all the things going on, we wanted to make sure that that didn't become a gathering point. And the current CDC guidelines are to limit the gathering of more than 10 people at a time. And so, so I think with the library and all the activities going on there, we felt it was important to close that down, and along with Besch, where you had a lot of out-of-towners and coming in. We haven't closed down the park, but the museum itself. So if a couple comes from Minnesota, or from some bicyclist from Germany I saw this week coming through, they go up there, they can wheel through, the gates are open Monday through Friday, they can take a look, see the sights, they just can't get to the museum. And now, staff is working... And now, staff is working on both these sites.
Freddie.
Sorry for interrupting, but just so our audience can see, I think you're on the next slide on our paperwork, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to hit the button. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie.
Yeah. The, so, yeah, so this is the slide I'm working on. So, Active Adult, library, museum, we, out of making sure there's, just to protect the public, we decided we would close those down. City Hall and Water Office remain open. We'll talk more about the Water Office, but City Hall is a hub of government and we have things coming and going, and I think the people, they need to come into government and see, I think at this point, I think we can manage the risk and definitely leave City Hall open. All parks and outdoor events remain unaffected. I think there's a lot of safety outside, you don't have the virus clinging to things. It's, you're more, you're less likely to touch a bunch of things, and it just seems more, more safe out there, although you have to use better judgment. But we didn't want to, I mean, shut down Community Center, Round Mountain Park, OD Park, I don't think we're there yet on those. On level one with this in the region, we are in the process of implementing some internal additions, keeping a six-foot separation, that's where you kind of see, and we're trying to see if we can get council six foot apart. I think we've about four, you know, four foot, three inches or something like that, depending on which set of chairs. But we're trying to keep large groups down, we're trying to practice that social separation, which is, I don't want to go into science of social separation, a lot of people are reading about it, you know, flatten the curve, social separation, just trying to slow down the spread of anything that may come up. And I believe the, I do believe the more effort we put into this now, the greater gains and negative consequences we'll avoid in the future. So, I think the work put in now will pay dividends in the future. So, we're working on that internally. The other thing we're working on internally now under Phase One or Level One, evaluating core functions and core personnel. We have a strategic action plan with a lot of things we're trying to get done. You know, this, taking care of this supersedes that, we have to take care of, public safety, public health is important. But if things get, if things get more, more involved, we need to be able to know that we can deliver our core function. Fire, police protection, water, sewer, and safe streets, those are the things that we need to be able to deliver. And so, we're evaluating what that looks like, what that means, who those people are that do that. All right, I'll switch my... So, this is on level one. At this point, I wanted to call the fire chief, Gary Robinson, up, and then the police chief, to talk about, about what they're doing with their people, because...
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to order some coffee. Be right back.
There you go.
Mayor and council, good evening. As far as operations go with the fire department where we're at today, we have sent out a few different directives to our personnel. Much of that involves how those crews interact when they go on calls, starting with the information we've received from the dispatchers. As far as the public goes, when you call 911, if you're in a position to need to do so, chances are, you will be asked an additional series of questions related to coronavirus signs and symptoms, mainly focusing on flu-related, flu-related symptoms that you may be experiencing. That information, you know, is important to our personnel because when they get it, we can start to implement some of the things we've put in place. Some of those things include limiting the number of personnel that come in contact with an individual that may be experiencing those signs and symptoms. Appropriate personal protective equipment with masks, gowns, and eye protection to help, to help prevent one of our healthcare workers from becoming exposed in a manner that they could contract the illness. With that, we also, we also implement some precautions with Tri-City Fire District. If we can limit the time we spend with that patient, if we encounter a patient, if you're a patient of ours, we may ask you to wear a mask if you're experiencing signs and symptoms of that. That helps prevent a patient from coughing or something that's going to send out droplets that could expose our personnel, along with the personal protective equipment we're wearing. So, if we come in and see you, you know, chances are, you're going to see us in some additional equipment that you wouldn't normally be wearing. With those encounters, you know, we want to limit the time that we spend within, you know, within the confines of that individual's house. So, we want that patient to be removed from that environment and get them, get them out to awaiting transport if, you know, if that is, if that is the option that's selected to transport that patient to whatever facility is appropriate. The, you know, the limited time of exposure, if we can get a mask on you, the patient, as quickly as possible, and get out of that environment, that reduces that amount of exposure that we have. For our personnel, we're monitoring our personnel on a daily basis when they come in, we're monitoring them twice a day for signs and symptoms. One of the biggest ones we're looking for is fever. Anybody that, anybody, any of our personnel that are maybe experiencing a fever, we want to, we want to take them out of the role of a healthcare provider and make sure that they're taking care of themselves. So, we're monitoring, we're monitoring temperatures twice a day for our personnel. In addition, we are, we are working to keep staffing at a level where we can, where we can operate our alternative response vehicle. That allows us, that reduces the number of staff that we send out on a call, you know, particularly for these type of calls. So, we reduce, we reduce potential exposure to larger groups, larger groups of responders that then could have an effect on our operations. As far as where we're at right now, that's currently, currently the status that we're operating under with plans for, with contingency plans should the need arise.
Questions for Chief Robinson or comments? Chief, I think one of the concerns on some of the conferences, PPE, are we well stocked with PPE? Are we seeing that coming to our community also?
So, we, we had some on hand. We currently maintain a stock that would be, would be considered for normal operations, where we may have, you know, COVID-19 is not the only, not the only illness that we encounter. Typically, other respiratory illnesses, we, you know, we have N95 masks on hand, but for normal operational, for normal operational use. We received some additional supplies from emergency services through a request. We've distributed those supplies to not only our personnel, but to police department as well. Some of those supplies have been in existence for a while. Our hope is that we get some additional, some additional equipment, and I believe that was discussed today in the, in the meeting that was held. But we, you know, we've taken that equipment, some of that equipment is in, has been in existence for a while. And so, in some cases, we're having to make sure, you know, we're hoping not to get into that equipment, and we'll have the supplies we need, but, but we do have, you know, we do have quite a bit on hand. It's, some of it is older than what we would, what we would like.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm going to reiterate just a little bit more direct than what Chief Robinson did. No, we do not have enough. The things that we have is for normal operations, yes, we do. We have some older equipment, and we are both working on trying to obtain additional equipment as we move forward. And dependent on the direction that this goes, we'll determine if we're going to be grossly short or just adequate as we move forward. So, we are reaching out to a couple of different vendors and suppliers and stuff to try to acquire more equipment. But to get us by for right now, yes, we're covered, but as this progresses, we are going to need additional stuff. Any questions on that? As far as some of the preparedness things that Chief Robinson has stated, is we are doing the similar things. We've worked with the fire department and with dispatch, we have specific questions that we ask when people call into 911 to identify in a clear methodology to determine exactly what we're dealing with when we get there. The reality of it is, though, is for the types of calls that my personnel go on, it's a little bit different, and there's only so much that we get, depending on what the call is or what the operation is that the officers are doing. We'll continue to do that. We've put some information out to our troops, we've provided them with the assistance of the fire department, specifically Chief Robinson and the county, with the equipment that they need, they've been trained up on it, they know when the appropriate time to use the equipment that we have. We've established some more protocols as far as cleaning up after transporting prisoners, cleaning up work areas to include patrol vehicles and things like that, making sure that they're fully equipped and fully stocked at all times. And so, we've been working with all that as we move forward. All that stuff is kind of standard, what they should have been doing already, but we've just reaffirmed the need to stay on top of that. As far as actual staffing levels go, we're in a little bit different boat than, let's say, Public Works and the other departments, the first responders, both Fire and PD. We've still got to maintain service levels with our personnel. So, we've been very direct with our personnel. If you're showing signs and symptoms, you will be sent home. But we are right now in a position where we've moved some personnel around internally to make sure we have adequate coverage on the road, and we'll make whatever adjustments to the schedule that we need to moving forward if circumstances dictate that. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
So, looking into the future, a local positive infection, how, what will be the city's response? I will tell you that going through the city departments, and again, they're ramping up testing, the biggest problem is that there's, you have, and various sites between four to 10 days that someone can be infected but not showing signs and contagious. And so, if we find that we have someone within the city or the local area, we're going to, you know, be looking at, you know, how do we make sure that we make, that our people don't inadvertently come in contact with someone who's also come in contact, but that's someone who's been identified. So, that person who's been out there for four to 10 days contacting people, they're out there and they hopefully soon will be identified, but they may come in contact with us. So, Active Adult Center, they're already separated. There's, there are three staff members there that are working. If something were to happen, they would, you know, they're not in contact with many other people. They come, they go, they operate under Tammy's guidance. Library is already shutting down, but there are people there working and interacting. And so, if something were to happen there and they had come in contact, it wouldn't have gone that far. But they're closed down. The BESH, Begawa, again, they're working out there, getting stocked and doing, you know, maintenance work and some of the summer jobs. There's three people out there. If one of them had come in contact with that person, we've already got them isolated. They're, you know, they come and get the mail, and there's not a lot of contact. Water Office, the Water Office is probably the last remaining strong level of contact with, with the city, with city members of the city, residents of the city. Right now, even if there was a local positive, I believe that we would continue to serve the public. I mean, we, we won't be doing turnoffs during this. We have ways to go online, people can pay their bill, they can do the drop off, but they need to come check the bill, they don't know how much, they want to bring cash. We'd like to not see cash, cash is hard to clean, cash, you know, is one of the things that is just a germ magnet, and it's been in all different places. But I think in talking to Jody and her talking with her crew, at this point, we would continue to keep the Water Office open, continue to serve those walk-in customers with an abundance of focus on the hygiene, on keeping this separation between the people, finding ways that we can, we don't have to pick up their credit card, we can, they can put it there and look at it, and we can look at it that way. And the bill, we can do a lot of talking without doing back and forth touching. I think we're looking on some ways that we can kind of, you know, worry about the money. A lot of cleaning up beforehand, cleaning up afterhand, a lot of sand sanitizers. I think that, you know, we've talked about other things, but I think if it's, if it's out there, if it's local, will be abundance of care, try to do the separation, but I don't see this staff wanting to close down the Water Office. And if there was a scenario where we did, that doesn't mean we would lock the doors and close down City Hall, we would just let people know that if you want to, if you have cash, put it, put your packet there, leave it inside, we don't want them dropping cash in the box, and then we'll deal with it using personal protection, PPE material. At the end of the day, if they, if they need change back, we can do it through the bill. There's lots of strategies, and so, this is what we're looking at. But I would say to council right now, if we come up with a positive in the, in locally, I don't think that naturally means we're going to close down Water Office. I know other offices have done differently. I know that Arizona Water is not taking, and many offices are not taking payments. But I do believe right now that we're, that's where we're leaning.
Ready?
I want to correct that statement.
Okay.
We are taking payments.
Oh, sorry.
We're not taking walk-ins.
Not taking walk-ins, okay.
Thank you.
And this, and this is part of the, you know, you've got to be very careful on what we're doing and how we're doing, so I apologize. The finance, we already have easily the ability to work remote, and it's all electronic communication, computer communication, and not a lot of people, the only thing that come back there is to, you know, for procurement and things like that, and we can, you know, keep limits on that. City Hall itself, we're going to, if, we're going to be very careful about the size of meetings, where we meet, how we meet, is the meeting really important? You know, can we do it through, you know, virtual meetings or email meetings that way? And so, try to keep that enhanced social separation so that we don't have any contact, as little contact. And all of this is so if one of us did happen to be, you know, come in contact and infected, that it wouldn't go through the whole City Hall, City Hall or the whole Public Works. Public Works, I think, is the most complicated. You have crews, you have them, we've already eliminated meeting, Monday morning meetings in the big conference room. I think John, John, do you want to, do you want to talk about some of the changes you've made already? Or, yeah, just, and then I'll pick up some of the stuff we're doing in the future.
Mayor and council, just like Paul mentioned, our Public Works is pretty complex, only for the fact that we actually serve so many different areas, the water to the sewer and even the public areas that we're leaving open, our Parks Department, you know, so it's going to be key for staff. As you already know, we have a big bus that comes every day and transports 24 Department of Corrections workers. So, we've got to make sure they're in a monitored state right now, they're checking them every day in and out of the system, so that also helps us secure that. But in securing, you know, these departments and separating our crews, traditionally, if we're short in any area, we move people around, that's what we're known for in getting things, those projects done. My direction, after earlier meeting today, is going to be really specific to keeping track of which department, which inmates, and which crews are assigned to what areas. That way, we can minimize the traffic. We do have several vehicles that we're going to have, that are assigned to employees, but those are going to be strictly, like I said, specific as well. In the public sector, that's also too, we send our crews out there, I want to make sure that our parks, you know, a lot of families are going to be, you know, being stuck indoors, they want to go outdoors, so we've got to secure these parks and make sure... They want to go outdoors, so we've got to secure these parks and make sure the maintenance and the cleanup. Luckily for us, we actually do, you know, on a normal basis, we're dealing with, whether it be the sewer issues and securing the water in the parks, we have, you know, quite a good supply of cleaning supplies and PPE, you know. So that's one of the biggest things. And then if we go on to the next levels, like Paul will kind of, you know, add on to this discussion, is that, you know, that's, we're going to have another meeting tomorrow, and we're actually probably going to probably really define the staff that we're going to need, you know, from bare bones all the way to what we're actually currently looking at right now. But like I said, we're, you know, we've got a lot of big projects that were scheduled, you know, that were, you know, whether it be served projects, chip seal projects, and we're still trying to squeeze those out between the weather and the staff that we do have currently.
Thank you, Joe. So what we're going to look at is making sure that all the key people aren't constantly involved with all the other key people. You know, we have two crews of water dogs. If it's a leak that one person can cover, then we leave the other crew away from that just so we have that social separation, just in case. You have, we have the SCADA system at the Cutter, so that is kind of an automated program to begin with. We have EUSI that helps out at the sewer plant, and I think we'll stop overlapping the two. That way, if something happens to our city's crew, EUSI can step in. If something happens to EUSI, they don't, you know, get mingled in with our crews. So we're just going to be careful. A lot of times, people will be matched up, so they're not always, you know, intermingling in different combinations. That way, if one, two, or three people are exposed, we know who they are and kind of grouping. And this is just in order to make sure, because this lag time, when you don't know who's infected and it doesn't show, that we don't inadvertently have one person get infected in one way and then spread it through the whole public works, and then we're in a hurt. So let me just jump to the third slide. So level three, and that, let's see, turn to my slide, too, because my glasses are not good enough. Positive infection within city government. Depends on where it pops up. If it's in library, they're already closed, we would just shut that down, send everybody to home for that 14-day self-quarantine, based on what the experts tell us to do and what their doctors tell us to do. But that's just in a high level. If it's a bigger department, we'll see if we can shut down where we need to, but then keep those things going. We can direct more staff to work from home, if possible. If it was City Hall, that's going to be, many people can work remotely in City Hall, but we'll have to decide then if it's possible to keep City Hall open or not if we have an infection with somebody within City Hall. Telephonic supervision, you know, we can have water dogs that they don't always have to come in and check in and punch in. They can just leave them home, get in their truck, you know, go out, do their core services and go home without being, you know, coming in contact with a lot. Again, it's this extreme or advanced social separation. Split shifts, like the courts or the water office, you can have one person working one time and have the other person off and separated, and then have that other person come up and switch out in the courts in different ways so not, so we can wait and make sure that if there is a contamination, that they don't take the other, their backup down. This is all speculative. We don't, you know, we're going to our best sources. We're trying to imagine how this would play out, but these are the things that we're thinking about, and we're getting this information from other people who are thinking about this. We are in uncharted territory, but better that we think about it now before it happens and hope that it never happens than we have, we come up with something, and all of a sudden we got to scramble. So we're trying to do that planning. And then the reduction to core services as required. The worst-case scenario is we have to just go down to fire police. They have their own plan, and they can do together. We've got to make sure the sewer plant's running, we've got to make sure the water's being pumped, we've got to make sure the pipes aren't leaking, but make sure the money's flowing to make sure payroll's being made. But we would identify, that's why we're identifying the core services now, and so we know what needs to stay up and where we can shed and send people home and lessen the impact if we get an infection internally in City Hall. So now, on the level two and the level three, we don't, other than what we do with City Hall and the water office and the crews, there's also the question of, what do we, is there any more closure, any more action by the city externally? And Mr. Mayor, I think at this point, you may want to address the idea that what other cities are doing, which is, so let me put it this way. CDC is not recommending the mandatory closure of restaurants and bars. They are recommending that people not gather in groups of 10. We're hearing that from the governor's office, we're hearing that from the county, and that's what we're trying, that's what the goal is trying to do. And we're finding that many people in Globe are already doing that. We've seen instances of Taco Bell and Jack in the Box closing their lobbies, and I think, I don't know about, I heard Denny's was doing something. I know that the Rotary has a group of 13 to 20 people, and Chalos asked us not to meet, and not, so we canceled our meeting because, you know, they didn't want to do that. So the, a lot of this, trying to achieve the CDC guidelines is happening on its own. And so that's where you have to look at, where does the government step in? Does the government need to step in? And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to toss it to you.
Yeah, you know, and I think that was the discussion in these conferences that we've been listening to from the governor's office and from our local emergency services. The guidelines, CDC guidelines, that's what they're recommending. So their recommendations are not requirements. So like Phoenix, Tucson, and Flagstaff, their mayor there has already declared a state of emergency, but along with their state of emergency, they also required them to shut down their bars and their restaurants. So that's not part of a state of emergency, and I'm glad you explained that, because that was a lot of questions that were brought up today, questions by phone, by text to myself and I'm sure to all of us on the council. They're two different things. The declaration is only to give us access to funds and resources for our community. It's going to be up to us, what level is there a trigger point that we hit that we're going to have to look at shutting down restaurants and bars, okay? And the other thing we won't have a control over is if the Governor Ducey decides that now we're going with a requirement, and it's statewide, we have no choice then at that point. So as we go through discussion and the declaration that we're going to discuss, and we all give our opinions as to what we think, I think we need, your thought process is, what is our trigger points for our community? I mean, we have it internally, and it's good to see that our staff has three levels that we're looking at to shut down, but we also got to look at our community. At what level do we really seriously think about shutting businesses down? I don't, you know, like I said, I'll save my comments to the last when we get to that point, but, but yeah, it's a recommendation only, and they're leaving it up to individual municipalities to decide what, to what level they want to go to.
And Mr. Mayor, I envision this, that at this point, I mean, I think we, it's the elephant in the room. We need to talk about it because we're taking these actions. But I think it's one of those things that will, if it's time, we'll know, it'll be, it'll be something that everybody will, it'll be, it'll seem common sense and necessary. I think this council is very good of having their pulse. Unlike, I mean, just for the sheer size of the city, with this council being very involved and having the pulse of their residents, their community, in comparison to a larger city like Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff, where, you know, they're not as close, they don't see what's going on. Mr. Mayor, I know you went out and talked to a lot of people today, and I know council's getting a lot of feedback. So it's not something that's taken lightly. I think the major goal is to help eliminate that spread, and when the time comes, I think you can decide that if it's happening holistically, if it's happening on its own, if people are taking their, not only the restaurants and bars doing what they're doing, but the people taking it upon themselves just to stay home and do the takeout. And, you know, that, I think we'll see that. But that's, in looking to the future, I think we needed to bring that forward, talk about it. And so we have, it's easier discussion to have now before it's necessary than to have in the middle of something gets worse. I mean, I think back of what was going on last week, and I never thought we'd get to where we're at this week. I mean, I low hope that next week is no different than this week, but who knows? It might be better, it might be the other way. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the response to the question, you know, what actions is the city taking? And I appreciate, and I think all staff appreciates the support and the trust that council has put in this city staff to look at this, to look after the residents, to look after each other, and make sure that we're planning and we are involved, we're taking this seriously, and we're hoping for the best, but if something less than the best comes, we will be ready.
Are there any questions for Paul? No.
I have one question, Paul. On our city levels that we have, are we in also including the hospitals? So I know they sent out a two-page guideline of what they can do and what their guidelines were. Is that going to, is that falling with us? Do they have the capability of the testing now if we needed that?
The, you know, the testing is the biggest issue. They're trying to ramp up, they're getting more and more test kits. I heard they have the test kits, but the swabs are an issue. I would hate to hazard a response to that. I will say that it is a work in progress. I think every day, they get more supplies and get closer and ready. I did, what I did see, I was walking by Dr. Andrade's office, and Dr. Andrade's office has a sign up that says, "If you halt," it doesn't say halt, but it says, "Breathe this before you enter. If you're coming in because you have a fever or you have respiratory stuff, issues, please go back to your car, call this number, and we will send staff out to you." And then they will bring them through a separate entrance, and they will deal, they will, you know, address them and see them and help them that way. But instead of that person walking into that, not emergency room, but that office, Dr. Andrade's right up here in Broad No, they'll handle it that way. And that's a very creative, non-government, that's just Globe innovation, where they have a way to make sure that they're lessening the impact and doing that, doing that separation. So I think, I think every doctor, I think every organization, I think every utility, every private business is taking this very seriously. I mean, you wouldn't, you know, how do we know that this is, the perception is? And we can see it by what's happening in our stores and some of the buying going on. This is, this is not just a few people. This is something that our community, for whatever, for, you know, for many reasons, believes is something that we need to deal with, and I believe the city is dealing with that. I know you all see the federal government, the state government, and the test kits and all that. My head spins trying to keep track of it. I would say that we hope that we get more test kits here sooner, and when we do, we will probably see a spike, but better to know than to not know.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
So item B is discussion and consideration to Arizona's open meeting law, COVID-19, and possible approval to hold virtual council meetings. Paul?
So, the council meeting is your connection with the people that have elected you and that you serve. But they also, by having a, in this situation, by having that public meeting where you're trying to do good, you could inadvertently putting people at risk. The Attorney General came out with, and Bill Simms, our attorney, conferred that we can have a virtual meeting, as long as we publicize what we're doing, we get everything out there, we have it. Luckily, we, you know, Danny already has this up on YouTube. We would be scrambling if we didn't already have that in place. Danny's going to, I'm going to have Danny come down and describe a way that the mechanics is going to work, but we do have the ability to make these, maintain the public nature of these meetings by, even though we will close the doors. The only exception to that is we, in the 24th, we do have two public hearings coming up, and we publish those, and those public hearings need to be public, and they'll be the very beginning of the meeting at 6 o'clock. We'll allow the doors to come in, and then when we go back to the regular meeting, we will ask everyone to step out. But Danny, do you want to talk about some of the things we have planned, including the TV set?
Yes.
Okay.
One thing we've been testing out, or I've tested out and successfully implemented in a non-live environment, is use of Microsoft Teams, which is part of our Office 365 suite. It's a video chat, instant messaging program, similar to what you would use with Apple FaceTime or other, you know, video chat applications. It can be run through computers or from a cell phone, and we're going to implement that so that when we have presenters in the future, they can do it remotely rather than having to come in here and stand at this podium. They can do it, they can, I guess that's going to be personal preference, but they can do it from a cell phone or from a laptop from their office in Phoenix or anywhere with an internet connection essentially. I also want to implement that for our city council meetings possibly, because we have a lot of people that are calling in remotely, and we're using a speakerphone to try to get everyone heard. We could probably do that a lot better with a laptop using Microsoft Teams. Another thing we're going to do to allow people to view the video that may not have internet access, weather permitting, we are going to install a television outside that we can broadcast the YouTube video. Being outdoors, we don't have to be quite as stringent about people gathering, even though we still don't want a large gathering out there. It allows people to view the YouTube stream if they don't have access to internet at home or a good internet connection at home. They can always come down here to our, to the public park and view it that way. We just want to do everything we can to make it available digitally, since we're trying to limit the number of people coming into this room.
So, are you talking about just the length of time that this virus is going on or from here on out?
I think predominantly for the time that this pandemic is in place, but it can be a tool we use in the future. If we have someone giving a presentation from the state or from, you know, a third party that wants to present on one of our action items, we could use that as an option in case they were unable or unwilling to come up all the way up to Globe if they're from out of town or something like that. I think it's, like I said, predominantly for during this crisis, but it's a tool that we have at our, you know, available to us in the future.
Daniel, just one question, too. If they're doing presentations from their laptop, can you project them on these screens? And is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay.
And for the councilwoman's question, I see this only as the time that it's needed. I mean, the technology is good, but I'm, you know, I shudder in thinking initially about shutting the doors to the public, but I think that this is, this is a council question. These are, this is your meeting, and this is the balance that you need to decide, and we're here to implement your wishes. But there was a lot of conversation about whether this could work or not. That's why I think the TV set is my idea, because if somebody comes down here, doesn't know what's going on, they're not well-connected, they don't have internet, they're, you know, they're still reading paper newspapers, and they walk in and they see that door is locked, it's like, how do I watch this meeting? It's happening right behind the store. They can just step over, and we'll have a TV set with sound, you know, not blasting, but broadcasting the meeting. I think that's really important. We're also going to, Danny's been brainstorming a lot of different ways that we can do Call the Public in a timely fashion and speak to the agenda items and things like that. But I see this as a temporary situation during this time, although the ability for people to, and I think it's, I mean, I like to see people and come personally in council, and we can, we can cut that off. But I will tell you that there are two to three people that are on the agenda next week that are willing to come here, but we're going to do them where they broadcast up just because out of the necessity of the current times. Just to reiterate, staff is not required to be here anymore. If they, if I require them to present or speak, or they want to present or speak, they have the option of doing it from their desktop or their laptop. They can sit in their office, and you can communicate with them here, and they can do that. I think everybody has to judge this, the risk on their own. We are not here to order people to put themselves in risk. We're not looking for the bravest to, you know, to a point, it's your job responsibility, but there are ways we can mitigate that. So that is the question to you. It is legal. It is what others are looking at doing. I think we're a little ahead of the curve on this one, because we do have the technology. I think we're a little ahead of the curve on this one, because we do have the technology. I've had friends that have heard of other larger cities that aren't, you can't watch them online, and so I think it's something I want to hear from council. If this is not council's desire, we will leave the doors unlocked and let people come in and do whatever combination for your meeting that you feel is safe, relevant, and a good balance.
So my comment is, I would only want to see this for the duration of this pandemic. I believe the doors should be unlocked and the meeting should be public, and anyone that's interested or wants to come should be welcome.
I agree.
Any questions or comments for Danny?
I agree with you.
I think it's a good idea to do it this way, but my concern would be is that we don't get into a habit here, the council, staying away and not being here. I would, you know, I mean, if you have to be away, fine. I think we should, if we can all be here, we should be here, or at least have a quorum, you know, but preferably, I mean, it's important that we show up if at all possible.
And there's, there are many different reasons, but yeah, I think, I think everybody believes that, and I think that should be stated by council that that is the starting point, is do, council, do their best to be here. And council's risk is, I mean, everybody involved, again, that's the rule of 10, trying to keep, you know, 10 people or less in a group. We have seven to start with.
Ready?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I've, as probably some of my colleagues here have been contacted by certain individuals within the community, first asking, you know, where's the city on this? Because we were, according to them, we were silent. This is a few days ago. You know, things are moving not by the day but by the hour, okay? And I think us as leaders of the community have to show to our residents that we have their best interests in mind. And we're in uncharted waters, all of us are, in our own lives, within business, within city government, and we have to think outside the box on how we can continue to provide service, to show leadership, and still have a presence, because I think it's important that at this point in time, not just in the world, in this country, in this state, in this county, but more so in our community, because that's who we represent, and that's who we are trying to protect. I strongly encourage the social separation, the sanitation, the, you know, the hygiene, everything that we can do, everything that we can do. Are we gonna stop this? I don't know. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a scientist, but the world has shown that right now it's not stoppable. And we have to take the measures, and I appreciate all the, all the things that our first responders, fire, police, and public works are taking to think outside the box and better prepare. All we can do is prepare and react. So I know it went off a little bit, but I'm talking about as a whole, as a community and as leaders, we must maintain the presence, and we must do what we can to show to our citizens that we have their best interests in mind. And to do this, you know, we don't know if there's gonna be self-quarantine or not, but thankfully, we have the ability to be able to show our residents that we're still here, even though we're self-quarantined, we're still here and we're still governing, and we're still doing our best to, to serve the public. So I applaud this measure. I don't, I don't know that we need to really focus on what are we gonna do two months from now? We don't know where we're gonna be two months from now. We don't know where we're gonna be a week and a half from now, okay? So I suggest that we not look too far ahead because of the uncertainty, but plan for what we have today and what's coming our way. It's uncharted waters. Believe me, I am so exhausted from my own personal job and how much I have been on the phone, conference calls, not just with my company, but with the counties that I represent. And it's just exhausting, but it's something that we all have to go through as leaders, and we all have to step up, okay? They're looking for our leadership. I guarantee you they are, so.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, to Councilman Pessora's comment, I would like to mention, I communicated with Councilman Shipley tonight. He asked if he wanted, should come in. He said he was, he had, was ill. I won't go into details. It wasn't in any way, you know, it was something much simpler, but I don't want to comment on that. But I said, lead by example, you know, one of our rules on our website, if you feel sick, if you're not healthy, stay home. And so I know he's, I know he's watching, because he texted me a little while ago. So he's out there. I'm the city manager, he can do that.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank Daniel for getting us to this point of technology where we're at now, even before this whole event happened. I mean, we're way ahead of the game that way, and not only your department, but police, fire, John, your department, all our library, all, everybody, and what they've done to get us to, you know, we depend on their expertise to give us guidance so we can make decisions up here. Thank you. Do we need, is this an action item? Do we need to vote on this, or is something, we just move on it?
In reading, in reading the tea leaves and the nodding of the heads, just, I believe that we have clear council direction to move forward with a virtual meeting, which is, and in the case of the March 24th, will be virtual except for the part, for the public hearings, and then from that point, we'll go in and try that. And it's a work in progress. We may change things up. Danny may find new ways of doing things, but based on the direction tonight, we will move forward with that for the 24th.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. If I can back, if, can I back up to Item A just to make a comment, or are we done? Is this, I don't want to be out of line here.
Still with staff, I think we're still, it was presentation?
On the...
3A, I'm sorry, 3A.
Yeah.
3A, that was a city response or level?
Right, and it was basically the slide, I'm sorry, the PowerPoint presentation. I just want to make one comment about how, can I go back? Or maybe I can make it on this one.
Yeah, what, the comment's related to what?
Comment was, the comment I'm gonna make is related to how you're positioning staff in the event that we want, we need to, one staff works, or one group of people work, and then the others sit back and then rotate.
And I believe we would have to go back to that item.
Okay, no worries, no worries. I can, I can, I can talk about it offline here. That's, it's not that big a deal.
It might be something to discuss even on Action Item 4A, because it's still part of our conversation.
Well, yeah, I think it was part of the emergency response, so I think we can squeeze it in.
Yeah, it's just a short comment, that's all. Thank you.
So next we go to Action Item. And Item A is discussion and consideration of the city's emergency proclamation, declaration of local emergency regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, and waive 2-4-10, a prior discussion rule.
And Mr. Mayor, before you go on, I wanted to clarify that this is not, this is a proclamation that you as mayor have the power to proclaim. We have put it in the, in the structure of a council meeting so that you can do that with the discussion with the public and the other members of council, but it does not require roll call vote or vote at all, and so it doesn't require waiving the rules. It's something that you have the ability to do just by stating so.
And under this topic, I would like to open it up to our council, because I'd like to have their input as to this proclamation, but also I'd like to, and I think we can do that, is open it up to, we reviewed the levels of the city responses to different levels. What is, what is a council feel should be our level when we, so we don't have to come back to another meeting? If we have a level that we reach level two and we have to shut down certain things, what is your feeling where we should, where those levels should be? Is that part of this?
Oh yeah, definitely part of that, but Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if it would be helpful for you to read, I know it's lengthy, but to read the proclamation?
Okay.
So that everybody has a baseline as to what exactly it says, and I think, and the public will better understand the conversation. Do, and Shelly, do we have, do you have a copy?
I didn't have a copy.
I think I have it.
You have it?
It's on the agenda packet. It's on your packet.
Yeah.
I left mine in the, my office.
I can read it off-line. I didn't have this on.
There you go. It's on the packet, from Shelly.
Tell them I have it online. So I'll read it. City of Globe Emergency Proclamation, Declaration of Local Emergency for the Purpose of Emergency Procurement and Federal Reimbursement. Whereas ARS 26-311 authorizes the mayor of the City of Globe, Arizona, and his or her designated to proclaim the existence or threaten existence of a local emergency when the City of Globe is affected or likely to be affected by public calamity. And whereas the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, was first detected in Wuhan City, Hubei Province, China, in December 2019, and the Center for Disease Control considers this virus to be a significant public health threat that has and continues to spread globally. And whereas on January 30th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 illness a public health emergency of international concern, and on January 31st, 2020, the United States Secretary of Health and Human Services declared a public health emergency due to the COVID-19 illness. And whereas the city continues to plan and prepare for event and facility closures, modified staffing plans, work-from-home programs, and enhance communication to employees to ensure effective continuity of operations of city government. And whereas prudence requires that precautionary measures be taken proactively due to the widespread nature of COVID-19 and its threat to public health, safety, and welfare, as referenced in the governor's declaration of emergency, and that impact from the same threaten public health and safety and economic recovery of Globe. And whereas the widespread nature of COVID-19 constitutes an immediate threat to life, public health, safety, and welfare, and to the economic recovery of Globe. And whereas this local declaration of emergency will help ensure the emergency procurement and economic recovery of Globe. And whereas the immediate threat of COVID-19 is widespread across the state, and precautionary measures are necessary to curtail the imminent impact on numerous homes and businesses in Globe, because it is a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public in Globe. And whereas the above facts give credence to the conditions of extreme peril and public health emergency, and the declaration of a local emergency will enable the City of Globe to provide emergency resources, request additional resources, and receive mutual aid from other political subdivisions and entities. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that a local emergency now exists in the City of Globe, and it is further proclaimed and ordered that during the existence of said local emergency, the powers, functions, and duties of the emergency organization of this city shall be those prescribed by state law, by ordinance, and resolutions of the City of Globe for the purpose of emergency procurement and federal reimbursement. Citizens are urged to cooperate with this emergency declaration, and to every degree possible abide by the safety announcements, advisories, restrictions, and to cooperate with the community's public health agencies and emergency services personnel. Most city facilities will remain open for the time, except for the senior center, museum, and library, but programs, events, and activities that are not essential may be suspended until further notice. Further details regarding building closures, suspended programs, events, and activities will be forthcoming. Persuasive to ARS 38-431.02 as amended, notice is hereby given to the general public that during the declared state of emergency, a possible quorum of the Globe City Council may be in attendance during the periodic health emergency operation meetings and incident debriefs. However, no formal discussion, action will be taken by the members in their role as a Globe City Council.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
So I have a question about, on the, on the very last paragraph, just so everyone that's listening at home understands this, it said something along the lines of buildings will be closed. I think that should say may be closed?
Yeah, regarding building, further details regarding building closures, that would be city buildings.
Okay. Just so people understand that, that this council is in no way tonight closing any businesses, or this council doesn't agree with that.
This document does not reference anything but internal, that whole paragraph, the whole paragraph references city structures, and we talked about tonight about closing City Hall, and that is the building. And it says building closure, it's not plural, so that's, this is the building. Yep.
Mike?
Mr. Mayor, you know, the importance of making this declaration is to benefit not only the taxpayers and business people, but it's to benefit the city to recover the reimbursements. For any unidentified expenses or costs that may result from this issue of duty about the declaration, we would be leaving ourselves open and having no reimbursement. So that's the important fact about Globe. I know a lot of people are concerned about, especially restaurants and businesses and stuff, and even in today's, on my call from the county, you know, that was a discussion about the economic effect to the county, and the fact that there have been no cases in the county is, you know, gave them enough confidence to say, we don't want to start affecting the economic benefits of our county by just making carnage. So I think it's very important for the public to know, you know, we're looking at an open shore, not just, just closing it all down.
Thank you, Mike.
And I think one of the last paragraphs on there is talking that we as a council can gather as far as the briefings, and I think that goes for the, right now, every afternoon at three o'clock, the Heel Emergency, Heel County Emergency Service is having phone conference that you can phone into and listen to as a council, so without violating our open meeting law.
Right, and this is a nuance that's changed just recently. It used to be one, you know, a group of council member could hear the comment from one person, as long as they didn't respond, it wasn't a violation, but right now, for a quorum of council to hear a comment by another council member on the topic that's headed for the agenda in a decision process is a violation of open meeting law. The one caveat, I will say, if a resident, if a resident gets your email and your telephone numbers are on the web and we're publicized, and they were to send you all this information or a comment, and I think they've been doing some of that, you're fine to all see that as long as, and I think you all know this, that you not respond back to that, to that person and include the rest of the council members. Now, all of you have the, have the right to respond to residents, and I would, you know, in a separate, open up a separate email and a direct conversation with you and that person without including the rest of the council members. That's the proper way. I know you all know that, but I just want for other people to realize that you can respond to a council-wide email, as long as you do it individually.
And Paul, with this declaration, and I know Fire Department Chief Robinson is familiar with all this processes, now is the time that we start documenting our time sheets and our supplies and resources that we have gone through and on the department in the past to get reimbursement, so we need to have good documentation of all our time sheets, whoever does it administratively.
There may be a point where we have people off and we're above and beyond covering their salaries, just because, and we have this policy now that we're required to stay home if sick, and so if we get to that point, we can submit those for reimbursement in certain circumstances. The other thing is, I don't know what the future holds, and I know that there are multiple levels of emergency, but I don't want to be caught flat-footed. multiple levels of, of emergency, but, but I don't want to be caught flat-footed where, you know, we assume that somebody else's emergency would qualify us. I, I think this is, this is what this council feels is important to do. I think as we clearly state as many other cities, and I'll tell you, there'll, there'll be a rash of another, you know, I think in the next two weeks, you'll see, two weeks, you'll see a majority of the cities take this effort and, and make this same declaration.
Yeah. So at this point, Paul, I do want to open up to our council and I'll go to each one individually. I'd like to hear their comments on, now that we've gone past the proclamation, but their comments on what we feel about our business community and, and what levels do we feel that we're at a threat where we need to close these businesses, you know, in the future? So I'd like to start with Mike, and if you have any comments.
You know, I'm, I hit all three points of the group of people that are close to being in the wrong class. I'm over 60. I have a heart, I had a heart issue, and the ones I had to fight with my best about eight years, nine years ago. I'm a diabetic. And I'm, I have a collapsed left lung, partially collapsed left lung. So I'm a prime candidate for the virus. Everybody else in this country, this world, I'm concerned about it, but I'm not going to quit living my life anymore. And, and I don't think anybody else should. I mean, we have to be smart. I think there's a nationwide effort about being kinder, you know? You know, we'll get through this. I really believe, you know, it's, it's just, it's going to be difficult before it gets easier. And if we, we stay smart and think about, you know, our positions as leaders, how we handle it, how people we want, that's pretty much, I'm real pleased to see that the city has developed this briefcase document. I think it's important. And, you know, hey, continue to live life. The Lord is here to protect us, and, and he doesn't put any extra weight on our shoulders if we can't handle it. So.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse, any comments?
I appreciate everything that you did here, Paul, with, with taking the measures that you've taken for keeping our staff safe and, you know, everything that our first responders and public works are doing. As far as closing businesses go, I just, I have a hard time swallowing that. It, it is, I think every family and every person, every, every resident has the right to do what's best for their family and what's best for them. In keeping with guidelines, that's a whole nother thing. I think that, you know, we've said it here tonight, that they're guidelines and something you should follow, but not necessarily forced upon you. So, and I think that our residents are doing a great job of that. I think that, and everybody here in this community, for the most part, are adults, and they're taking the necessary steps to do those things. So I agree that we do need to come up with phases as to what, what this council believes is the right course of action and when it is. And if the governor decides to do what he wants, that's, that's his prerogative, and we'll follow what he orders. So that, those are my thoughts on it, and I think that washing your hands and being kinder are something that we need to really look at and, and continue, continue to do. I, I think that people need to be a little bit more savvy on going out and shopping and not panicking so much and buying up all of the toilet paper in the community. I think that you're creating a problem for people that aren't hoarders, but, I mean, to each their own. But those are my thoughts, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As a small business owner, I was afraid at first, I honestly, about that. But I'm glad to see the, the verbiage here. And I think it's important for the city to reach out to other business owners, maybe a PSA or whatever. Not everybody's paying attention to this meeting tonight, but I've gotten several phone calls, people coming to visit, you know, why are you shutting, you know, my business down? And it's like, we're not doing that. So I think this would be good to get out to the public, to other small businesses, and let them know, that's not what we're doing. There is a message on Facebook today about this meeting tonight, and that the city is shutting on all the bars, the restaurants. I didn't reply to that, but I think it is important that we get out there, radio, papers, whatever, to reach out to the public and not scare, everybody's scared right now watching the news. You know, that's all the news is, you know, all night long.
Well, we got to get.
And you're seeing different cities. You know, I thought that same thing, you know, Mesa, the Tempe City Council met today, same thing, I don't know where they left off at, but Phoenix, you know, they showed pictures of downtown Phoenix, and that's a ghost town. I personally have my life savings wrapped up in my business, and if that were to happen to me, I'd be, I'd be dead to nothing. I'd have a big, a hard time with that. And I'm sure everybody's the same way. All these little businesses downtown, the restaurants and everything else, that's why y'all work so hard and why we work so many hours. And it's, like I said, it's not just me, it's all the bars. And not just food service, these little antique shops and everything. So I think it's, my main thing is to get the word out that we, as a city, are not closing down businesses. So, and, and we need to practice the, you know, the six-foot rule, not large gatherings, which, excuse me, which was interesting to me when we closed the schools, and they were taking these children and putting them in like, it's not daycares necessarily, but boys and girls clubs and everything else. Those are larger rooms with more children than those together, other than a classroom of 30 kids, pretty much. I just think that was kind of a, a jumping the gun situation. So that, my own personal feelings. But, and then, public transit, they're still, they're still using public transportation. You can get 50 people in a bus, the light rail system, same thing. So that's a part that I don't understand, but that's another subject too, though, as well. But I think mainly is to get the word out to the small business owners downtown and all around, to let them know that we're not shutting them down. That's what I hear.
Thank you, Mike. Freddie?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, a lot of my thoughts I already said earlier, but I think part of our strategizing in the phases, one, two, and three, we not only talked about or heard about our, our departments, staffing, and how the planning is going on with that, but I would hope and I would request that not only is it with the staffing, but I think with upper management, that needs to be practiced as well. Let's not put all of our management all in one, one scope of a team, because just like the, the field personnel or the boots on the ground, we need also consider that management separation so that we can still have that leadership at that level. So that was a comment I wanted to make earlier, but, you know, the phases are, are great approaches to, to the uncertainty that we're under right now. You know, I, I don't think it's time to talk about closures because that was not on the table at all. So I'm going to save my comments on closures because we're, this is not why we're here today. I would hope, and I, and I applaud those businesses that are already taking the steps, maybe closing down, I could be wrong, but I, I've heard, and maybe you can confirm me, and I, I don't want to step on Nerd Burger, but I've heard that they've shut their dining room down, but they're offering to-go and even delivery. So, you know, that's thinking outside the box. You know, I applaud them for thinking, how can I continue to make my business profitable? And, you know, it's tamping down those, those big groups, it's tamping down, and you mentioned it, you know, flattening the curb. You know, I think if we flatten the curb and, and this gets spread out over time, we don't see those spikes of, of people having to go to the hospital. We don't see those spikes of where we're in a position where we have to shut down and, or maybe even the governor for that matter, shut down. So I, I, I think these are good steps. Obviously, we have to be considerate of our businesses. They've, like Mr. Stapleton, he is, he's put, he's wrapped up his entire life into his business. And again, right now is not the time to talk about, talk about closures because that's not where we're at. So I also agree that we should get that message out. Don't let it fester, don't let it build, because if we do not set the record straight, any false advertisement out there then becomes the truth. Okay? So that's part of our leadership. We got to make sure we get the word out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Shirley?
Well, I also come from several different positions in the city, and one is certainly a small business owner where, you know, I am reliant upon my business for my livelihood. And also a representative of District Five as the city. In both of those seats, I do not believe that it is local government's role to force businesses to do anything, open, close, what have you. I, I just think it is each individual or family's right to self-govern. And I, I think we need to make that clear. That, that is my viewpoint.
Thank you, Shirley. Well, I got a few comments. We are dealing with a complex situation right now, and it's not going to be an easy fix. But like Freddie said in one of his comments, changes are happening by the hour. It's not the day or the week, it'll happen by the hour, and, and we're, we're seeing those changes as, as each day goes along. And Shirley made the comment, we're in it all together, and that's what our community is. We need to work to make sure that we, we make it happen as a community, not as individuals. As of today, we, if you've heard the statistics, there's 27 positive cases in Arizona. Two days ago, there was 13. Yesterday, there was 20. So we gained seven a day, which isn't a whole lot, Maricopa being the highest with 11 cases there. Pinell has eight, Pima five, Graham one, and I think Paul said this native nation has two. But we also got to look at the other end. There's been over 200, I think 250 tests made, and over 150 of them are negative. So we're really looking, less than one-third of the people being tested in Arizona are actually testing positive. So we got to look at that end, too. They told us today in a briefing, and we're having briefings from the county at three o'clock, we have briefings in the morning from the governor's office, and I think Senator Sinema is having briefings also. I haven't been able to plug into those. So we're getting a lot of updates on, on a regular basis. They're, they're assuming that they're going to be able to do 1,800 tests today, or daily in Arizona, although they're having problems with the swabs and stuff like that and the supplies to do it. So that's important to keep up with, and I think our city staff is. I think we, as a council, need to, are keeping up with that also. Our city website has linked a lot of information there that people can go onto our website and, and look at these. And if you want to keep up with, with the map breakdown on a daily basis from the state, you go to azdhs.gov. And that gives you the different breakdowns of what counties have the positive tests, that's all it really does. So azdhs.gov, if you can go on the website, if you want to look at that. And we need to understand the CDC guidelines are a recommendation, not a requirement. But again, businesses, please prepare yourself. If, if the governor says tomorrow that we have to declare it a state, a state of emergency and shut down all businesses, we have no choice. So, but as far as a council, I think we have a unique, unique community. Phoenix, Tucson, Flagstaff are huge. So it's really tough and I think hard to really govern every business in there. You're talking millions of people, and how do you really do it? So that's important to understand. I had the opportunity again today, and I went down, because I had a lot of soul searching to do, and I went down and I visited with numerous restaurants. I did visit with one bar downtown, and I went to businesses outside of the downtown area. And I was really impressed with our community and the restriction that they have self-imposed on themselves, policing themselves. We have one business, run restaurant, that's cut his capacity down one-third so he can have the spacings where they sit. And like you mentioned about delivery, you know, not only Nerd Burger, we have Copper Bistro, there's a bunch of other ones that are doing delivery. Corporations, obviously, the bigger corporations like Wendy's, Taco Bell, Danny's, they've already instituted no dining in. It's all takeout. But these are big corporations with a lot of money, and the small businesses are the ones that will hurt if we were to shut these down. So we just want to emphasize, I think, that we need to understand that as a council, we want to go by the guidelines, CDC guidelines, to make sure that we do good hygiene, make sure that we keep ourselves from large gatherings. I don't know how the bars would do that. I think the restaurants have a better chance of doing that, but I think if they govern themselves and keep themselves separation somehow, I think that'll help us. The other thing was be kind. We have the social greetings at 10+ is what they're saying. They've canceled a lot of our, our events that are here, and that really hurts us. But I think what we are right now, we're in the survival mode. We're trying to survive, I, I think even as small businesses, just to get by till we find, till we get to the next level and get, get this behind us so we can see those profits again in the future. You know, our, this council and our community has worked hard, economic development, and we've seen some, we're seeing some strides now where people are coming in and interested, and we don't want that to furlough that. We want to be able to, to promote our community after this is all over with. So I thank the community, I thank our, our staff and our city for everything they've done, but I thank our community for the, the different guidelines that they set for themselves, their standards, to help our community, because we are in it together, not just Globe, and not just Globe, but Globe Miami, this is our entire community. So I don't know if we can, this proclamation will go out on our website? Is this something that we can emphasize, even going out to each business and visiting and make sure that they understand what we want to see from them? And, you know, self-policing, making sure that they have separation, cleanliness, and I think they know that already, but.
But Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm so pleased to hear all the comments from, from council. When we set this meeting up, you know, we, staff has been trying to, to react and do the right thing, wanted to get council up to speed as to where we are and what we were thinking. Things were happening so fast and so, you know, did not realize that the, I, I felt that we probably would talk about the, the concept of, of closing restaurants, meeting, you know, the other, because other cities were doing it. It was happening very fast, and they're ticking off on, you know, Monday and on Tuesday. And, and I'm glad, I'm so thrilled that, that council has taken a firm stand here and said what you believe, what you believe individually, what you believe as a council, so that there is no confusion. So, so we can, we can put out in a PSA tomorrow with this, that, that council has, at this time, has no intention of proceeding with any, any type of mandatory closures. I, I think that what we've seen in, in just this week is everyone stepping up. And every time, if, if, we would rather be the partners with the, the business community and, and win their respect and, and partner with them than trying to be their parents and tell them what to do. It's not, you know, it, it may be good for other cities, it's, I don't see it working as well here. And, and there's no need if, if everybody steps up and, and follows those recommendations. And I will tell you that the CDC recommendations is not to close mandatory business and, and bars, it is just to limit the number of people, that's simply it. And, and if that, if you keep your eye on the ball, if that's the goal, then let's, the creativity, businesses are going to have a hard enough time trying to make ends meet just with, working their way through this. They don't need externalities to, to make things more complicated. So, so I, I share in your, in your support.
I just had one more comment, I, before we close, I, I, we, we all realize what great healthcare workers we have, what, what great and dedicated police forces and safety personnel and fire department folks that we have, and, and we all appreciate that. Who, who doesn't get the, the thank yous are the people at the fries and the Safeway and the gas station and the, you know, that are, they are exposing themselves to everybody and not being treated well sometimes. It's not their fault that the, that the supplies are gone, but they're there and they come to work every day, and, and they're part of our community that are sometimes under, underappreciated and, and underlooked at. So I, I think we all owe them a great, a great thank you for sticking in there.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, just something on the herd on the news just, just recently, that the federal government has lifted some of the requirements on law. that the federal government has lifted some of the requirements on long-haul truckers, on the hours on the road, and so that's going to help get the goods flowing. They're there, they just got to get them to the stores. So there's so many aspects to this. Mr. Mayor, members of council, before we go and end this, I did get, we did get one email from Tom Walsh and it says, I'm going to read it, I'm going to read it as he wrote and then I'm going to try to respond to it because it's a set of questions. Can you include cemetery tour, dapper dog walk and historic tour as being okay to participate in? And then Old Dominion Days. I don't know if we can include them to be, to okay to participate. I think everybody has to judge themselves. I believe that dapper dog walk...
Let me speak to though, the dapper dog walk, dapper days and the cemetery tour has all been postponed. I don't know about the, what one?
So has the camaraderie.
The camaraderie, okay, that one I didn't know about.
And I believe that, but I do believe that the cemetery cleanup, the dumpster, those are outside events and I believe, and they're pretty spread out, so I believe those are...
Well, the dumpster's already there for this weekend's.
Yeah, staff does, just a dumpster.
Well, five dumpsters, we have five dumpsters out and we encourage people to use them.
On the cemetery cleanup, I think that's still a go.
Still a go right now.
Yeah, and so, because everybody spreads out.
That's on the 27th, Friday, the 27th.
And then, but I do believe that, and we're trying to, we're working on getting a schedule that we can put on the web of what we know is up and going and what we know is closed. We don't have control over all these events. We are not, but just to be absolutely clear, we are not mandating that any events close or not happen. These are the promoters of the events. If it's our event, we'll decide and we'll make that move. Many of these were partnerships, but it's the partners that are making these decisions to do that. On Old Dominion Days, I think that's in September, gosh, I hope we're through this by September.
Right.
You know, so I hope that that goes on and all you can do is hope for the best and support each other and, you know, make sure that we have our plans in place. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have your direction on doing a PSA in the morning, sharing this and sharing what it is and what it isn't and clarifying that there is no intention by this council to mandate the closure and that this does not trigger that. So we'll clean that up. And, Mr. Mayor, it's your proclamation, by reading it tonight, you have made your proclamation, so there's no action needs to be taken by council. And so that would end, that would end this. Unless there's any other question, that would wrap up this agenda item.
Any other questions, comments? Are we doing executive session often?
Mr. Mayor, there is no need for executive session tonight.
Then I call a vote for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor?
We have motion to second for adjournment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passed.
Thank you very much.